Hello, everyone. If we could, let's have a moment of silence and reflection for just a moment before we start. Thank you very much. And there's a lot to think about and worry about and be thankful for in the world today. All I've got to do is watch TV a little bit and read a little bit and know why we're so lucky to be at Holden Beach where we don't have so much of that stuff. We'll officially call the meeting to order. And welcome tonight. We see some new faces here tonight. And it certainly is refreshing. And we see a lot of more experienced faces here tonight. And we'll add item number three on the agenda. But before we do that, reminding everyone that in the back of the room, there's a table that has all the documents that you might find interesting in regards to the meeting tonight, an agenda and so forth. So let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, United States, to my right. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four, consideration of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a proposal to move Agenda Item Number 14 in front before Item Number Eight.
You want just to reverse those?
No, I want what is currently fourteen, Guest Speaker Mike Sullivan, Holden Beach Property Owners Association, to be after the police report and before the discussion and possible approval of Resolution 1701.
To make this... I'm trying not to have to renumber everything. Can you just reverse those? Can't reverse. All right. Tell me what you want. Do you want the...
Fourteen just before eight.
Fourteen before eight.
And we still do the eight right after.
Okay. I got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Still going to be number fourteen, but it's before number eight. All right. Anything else? Is our motion approved, the agenda as amended?
I move you approve the amended agenda.
Is our second?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion here and now, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. The agenda stands as amended. Number five, consideration of the approval for minutes for the regular meeting of January the seventeenth. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stands approved. And five B, the meeting of January twenty-third, those minutes.
If I may interject.
Yes, sir.
Just, and I don't have anything to add to the minutes. I'd just like to point out that we neglected to identify a meeting time for the board workshop on the fifteenth of March. And if you could, I guess, give your calendar some attention between now and the time that we get to the manager's report to decide what time you'd like to do that on the fifteenth, that would be appreciated.
Still a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion here and now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stands approved. So the minutes of five A and B are both approved. And now, we're going to have some public comments. And I have a list here tonight. Mr. Fleschauer. Mark Fleschauer.
I am speaking in regards to Item Nine on the original agenda for tonight. On behalf of my wife Karen, who unfortunately is out of town, but asked me to speak on her behalf. Nine years ago, at the February twenty-sixth Board of Commissioners, when two separate enterprises appealed to the board to allow for the sale of goods or services directly on the beach strand. Karen expressed our opinion on the matter, both at the meeting and in a subsequent letter to the board, copies of which I just passed down to the current board. For the sake of time, I will only read an excerpt from her letter. "The beauty of Holden Beach is the fact that you don't need to take money to the beach. I don't want to discuss or argue about buying something with my nieces, nephews, or grandchildren every time they see the cart heading our way. People choose Holden Beach because it is a place that has remained the same throughout the years. Vacationers, as well as local residents, continue to bring their children and grandchildren here so they can enjoy the same simple pleasure of going to the beach that they enjoyed as a child. I beg you to please don't commercialize our wonderful island. Please don't open Pandora's Box. We mean no disrespect to tonight's presenters. We simply believe the town has provided sufficient commercial zoning, including several oceanfront parcels, and that commercial activity should be contained within these designated zones. Thank you."
Thank you, sir. Ms. Compton?
Beverly Compton, thirteen seventeen Ocean Boulevard West. And I too am speaking against the application, not mindful of the person who's doing it or that there already is commercial activity on the beach, because I'm not against them at all. I'm glad they're here. But I, and I appreciate all the things this board has done in the past. So I don't want to quibble. I live on the west end, I play bocce on the east end, but I'm probably not in the middle very much. But Slippery Slope came to mind when I was thinking about commercialization. And Pandora's Box, which has already been mentioned. And I just think that Holden Beach is important for what we don't have, including vendors on the beach. Thank you."
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Young?
Sheila Young, one ninety-three Brunswick Avenue West. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You always can hear me. I'm here to comment on Agenda Item Number Nine. I'm here to voice my personal opinion on any commercial ventures on the beach. Looking back at prior requests, several years ago, two vendors came to the same town meeting held over at the chapel. I believe someone else has already referred to that. One was a parasailing company. The second, I believe, was a food vendor. Neither one was approved. Soon after, a fatal parasol accident happened with the same company that had come to request here. They had the accident on an area beach. It was a good decision that Holden Beach did not approve their request when they asked for access to our beach. Several years later, the current vendor presented again, not approved. This vendor, the one who's going to speak tonight, seems to have a well-established business in our commercial area that we, many of us, think is fine, and we commend them for that. Many of us, permanent residents, second homeowners, and visitors, have chosen Holden Beach because it's less commercial than other places. Some parents and grandparents may not appreciate any vendors on the beach, and that's been mentioned by previous speakers. If one vendor is allowed, will others follow? Can we allow some and not others? Will Holden Beach be accused of discrimination if that happens to come up? It's up to you to make the best choices for us. You're our elected officials. I'm sure you will make the best choice, and I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Woods?
I'm Urban Woods. My wife and I own property at two five nine and two eight nine Ocean Boulevard East. I want to speak briefly on two agenda items tonight. One is the possible resolution dealing with FEMA flood insurance maps. One of my houses, the one that we had built, we intentionally built it four feet above base flood elevation, and we had gone six, but we had to squeeze the root pitch down to meet the building height restriction. That house is twenty-one feet above mean high water. It's currently in a VE zone, and under the new maps, we'll go to AE. I've got a fifty-five hundred dollar bill waiting to be paid. And this thing has been dragging out for a long time. Those of us, I know there are a lot of people that are going to have changes, mostly going to be good changes. For those of us who are in a situation where it goes from VE, which I think stands for very expensive, I imagine there's velocity or some other word to it, but VE is very expensive. And if it goes from VE to AE, I'm expecting to save two or three thousand dollars or more on one house. And I build it at twenty-one feet to be above most category five storm surges. So I urge y'all to do whatever you can. I'll be prepared tomorrow to look at our congressman's website and see where he might be holding town meetings or somewhere this week. I just arrived from Virginia, but I will track him down and be more than happy to pass along whatever y'all do in addition to your official communication. The other issue I'm fully supportive of is Item Number Thirteen, possible approval of Lockwood Folly dredging piggyback project. At my back of the envelope, numbers are correct. At a dollar and a quarter, give or take, a cubic yard, which would be what the town would be paying. That's a sweet deal, and anytime you can get sand at that price, we ought to do it. Both of my properties are paying significantly higher property tax because of the central reach project. I fully support the central reach project and don't have a problem with paying for that. My belief is we've got one beach, one island, one community here, and I appreciate y'all's help on the east end on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Chief Wally Lane?
A month ago, I was feeling pretty good about break-in season. That, however, was a month ago. Since that time, we've had six. Those have been between the two hundred block of OBW and the nine hundred block of OBW. They've all been on the oceanfront. They've all been rental houses. They've all had flat-screen TVs in them. All those flat-screen TVs have disappeared. And to date, we don't have a suspect. It's not just happening here. It's happening in the county. It's happening at the other area beaches. The South End Task Force is working diligently, trying to come up with a suspect. However, so far, we're six in and nobody arrested. That being said, I'd like to say a couple other things. Number one is, it is still break-in season. Right? It is still break-in season. We depend on you guys to help us as much as you can. You see something that doesn't look right? If you hear something in the middle of the night that doesn't sound right, please give us a call so we can investigate it and hopefully catch whoever's doing this. It's been an average of one a week. We haven't had any so far this week that have been reported. The other thing I would say is this. I call this break-in season for a reason. The reason I call this break-in season is that this time of year, there are not as many of us here as there are during the summertime. And majority of houses on the oceanfront are, unfortunately, rental properties and not properties that are occupied by full-time residents. That being said, if I owned an oceanfront property on any beach, me personally, if I wasn't going to be there full-time and there wasn't going to be somebody there full-time, I would have an alarm system. ATMC, seventeen dollars a month. Not recommending them, just throwing it out as an observation. A minimum of seventeen dollars a month. If I got to replace five flat-screen TVs once a year, I'm probably looking at twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars to replace those TVs. For that same amount of money, at seventeen bucks a month, I could have an alarm system and catch whoever's trying to break in to steal my TVs. I would wholeheartedly rather do that, me personally. And I just throw that out there because this time of year, there are not enough of us here, and there's not enough of us, police, to be everywhere all the time. The break-ins are occurring on the oceanfront, and they're occurring from the oceanfront side. Hard for us to be on both sides, twenty-four hours a day. Need all the help we can get. The other thing I would say about break-in is this. Once they start, they don't stop until they get caught. Because every time they do one and they get away with it, that encourages them to do another one. And the more they do, the better the chance is they're going to get caught. So I'm confident that by the end of break-in season, whoever's doing this will be in jail. But in the meantime, they're doing a lot of property damage to oceanfront houses, and they're taking a lot of property out of oceanfront houses. So if you see anything, hear anything, feel anything, give us a call. Let us check it out. Otherwise, fairly calm on the beach.
Let in answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief, for all the hard work, you and your staff. Number fourteen, Mr. Sullivan.
On behalf of the Holden Beach Property Owners Association, all the residents, I'd like to thank the board for giving us some time to speak on this issue of the flood maps. Just about everybody who lives on the island is going to be affected by the flood maps when they're implemented and being preliminary in the future effect of things. Just to give you a little background, in August of two thousand and fourteen, the preliminary flood maps were published. That's twenty-nine months ago. In October, at the Board of Commissioners meeting of two thousand and fourteen, there was a presentation made to describe to the community what the flood maps would do, how they would affect the community, and how we would benefit from those flood maps being Give you some of the statistics that were given at that time. Ninety-two percent, ninety-two percent of the property owners would benefit from the new flood maps. At the time, there were thirteen hundred and twenty-eight in VE, in a very expensive zone that you spoke about. The new flood maps moved twelve hundred and twenty-five of those thirteen hundred and twenty-eight people from VE into AE. If you do the math, that comes to us paying between four and five million dollars more a year as residents of this community than we have to. That's twenty-nine months ago that they put these maps in place. So when I... Excuse me. Now, that's only for the people going from AE, VE to AE. That has nothing to do with the people who are in AE, but their flood BFV has been lowered so that they're now above the BFV by a couple of feet, because every foot above BFV, you save money on the commute. So we're talking about a minimum of four to five million dollars a year. I can't tell you how much it is because I don't know how many people are in the variance between their feet. But the VE, speaking to what you're... Your premium is two thousand, eight thousand dollars a year. That's kind of the range. You go to AE, it's five hundred, eight hundred dollars a year. That's a big, you know... To me, we should be yelling and screaming about this. And so what happened is, last month, when I came to the Board of Commissioners meeting, I intended to speak and ask a question about this, but when the town manager gave his presentation, he explained that the anticipated time, which was January or February this year, for implementation of the map, had been postponed indefinitely and that we had no idea when they would be implemented. There was very little conversation from the board, asking why or what we could do about it. So when that was done, instead of me getting up and speaking on it myself, I went back to the directors of the Holden Beach Property Owners Association and asked if we could make a presentation on behalf of everybody who owns property on the island. And we had some discussion, and we had some communication. And as a result of that, we came up with some simple suggestions for the board and requests for the board, that they take proactive role by getting our congressman involved, getting our two senators involved, and by writing a letter to FEMA regionally and the administrator of Washington DC. And that we, as a community, as a group, would put a letter on our page that people could then tap into and send to the respective FEMA and elected officials. And then we shared that with the board. And I'm happy to say that the board, in the resolution that's going to be discussed right after I'm done here, has incorporated and adopted all those suggestions into the resolution. So for that, I appreciate that, and I think that it's time that we do it. And one thing I'd say, the resolution follows up on my ideas of what people are involved, the better we are. But I would say that the time has come, that if this isn't acted on quickly by Brunswick County or by the other coastal communities, that it's time for us to act on it. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Freer?
Yeah, so Item Number Eight, discussion of possible approval of Resolution 1701. As Mr. Sullivan has expressed, I have, and I'm sure a number of the board has been speaking to HBPOA, individuals that are affected, our friendly realtors. And I know a lot of activity behind the scenes from the town manager and town planner has been happening, but I agree with the previous speaker that it's time to get proactive and start raising our voice to anybody that will listen. And so that's the background behind this resolution that I propose. The town clerk going to read the resolution, or...
I could. It's also in the back of the room, so everybody...
Okay. I know it's long, I don't...
Whatever the board, whatever you'd like to do, if you want to do.
I know there's a... Yeah, I know there's a question that came up about the date in it. In the first paragraph about the communities in the state in June two thousand and sixteen, that was the flood map. And as Mr. Sullivan pointed out, it was fourteen, first published in August of fourteen. Is that the case, David?
Both of those dates are correct. You have to realize that Brunswick County was actually the very first, it's a poster child for the process, and had its maps, it's my understanding, had its maps, preliminary maps done first, and then the rest of the states followed through. So both of those dates are correct as it relates to the, and other affected communities in the state. You know, it took some time for the other maps to get done and the state to come up with their process, because we've been on hang, like you said, for about a year, trying before the state finally figured out what the actual review process was going to be.
So could we then add that August fourteen date in there as far as relating to Brunswick County and leave the communities in the state in two thousand and sixteen? So just insert before that, the first published in Brunswick County in August two thousand and fourteen?
That's a very easy edit.
Yep. Okay.
Well, I had a question about that. Since we were the poster child, apparently, is it not true that all of the maps were published eventually at the same time, June sixteen?
It's my understanding that all maps in the state have been done now. Now, I haven't verified that.
Well, I guess what I was wondering is, could FEMA have acted earlier because we had an earlier submittal? I thought they all were assembled and then published. I don't know.
I don't know either.
I just don't want to have something in a resolution that isn't factually correct, because we're going to be urging FEMA, we're going to be putting pressure on as many politicians as possible, and I don't want to have something in there that could be pulled out and challenged, and therefore we lose our story, the message.
I'll just say this. That date, if you go in and look at the maps now, it still has. If you put in your property, or you put in my property, it puts the date of the map, U twenty-nine, two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, August the fourteenth, August the fourteenth is correct for the town maps. I mean, I pulled it off...
Why would you want to highlight the twenty-nine months, excuse me, rather than the number to June? It's accurate, it's correct. We've been... There was a presentation here in October, the board, on the claims of the town.
The wording doesn't refer to the town, it refers to FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management issued the preliminary flood maps. I just, if we're going to add other details, we're going to need to change some of the wording here, because otherwise, I'm concerned, the town's going to look like we don't know what we're doing when we go to the...
Yeah, so...
To the higher officials to take action.
So since, you know, since we should focus on Holden Beach, if you look at the second sentence, or I'll just, whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management issued a... and North Carolina Emergency Management issued a new preliminary flood map for the town, and here's where you change it, on, in August twenty fourteen-
Very good.
With the anticipation at the flood, final flood plane, you know, so that's where the, simple edit, keep it simple, keep it focused on Holden Beach. Does that make sense?
And is the process such that when these maps are approved, they have to be approved for the entire county at one time? Or are they approved just for Holden Beach?
It's done by panel, by panel, by county. And so, the panels, for example, the panel that has the town hall in it runs all the way to Varum down. It's kind of the analogy, so it's done on a, by county basis, is my understanding.
So, so that means that we are being held up by the county?
I can't say that, I don't know that. We're being held up because there have been some appeals, and FEMA is working through whatever the bid is that they're working through on those appeals.
Because there are areas in Brunswick County that will not benefit from this change, that the opposite is true.
I don't know.
So, so to briefly, you know, if you look at section one, we're asking the board through this resolution to communicate to FEMA and the North Carolina Emergency Management. Section two is our, is our ask to the Board of Commissioners of Brunswick County to better understand that and communicate our, our need for urgency. So, and we could do that a number of different ways. We could send some commissioners up to their next meeting, we could, I don't know, probably, the mayor probably knows everybody on that Board of Commissioner, he could communicate this resolution or communicate the need for the accelerated schedule. We could do a number of different things within that section two to get in front of the Brunswick County Commissioners.
Well, I like that it's directed from Holden Beach, and it explains our plight. I think that's very important, so I think the wording of it is that.
And I think speaking up and pushing our case is better than sitting still and being quiet and waiting until the government decides to do something. I don't see any downside to the board giving our position that we would ask them to pay attention and as quickly as possible get this approved for us.
Mr. Hewitt, do you see anything in section one that the staff will be directed to do that is beyond the staff's ability?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
The one thing I would like to elaborate on though is providing a monthly status report on the FEMA flood map process at the commissioner meeting. Please don't look at that as, as the staff is either responsible for making FEMA get these maps done or not. We've communicated a whole bunch on a number of different levels and, you know, like, like my grandfather used to say, it doesn't do the horse one bit of good when the jockey's coming down the home stretch whipping him with a riding crop. It just makes the jockey feel good. So, we'll be glad, we'll be glad to sorty hard on this. And I just, we're dealing with FEMA, the federal government, and some, that's like pushing a wet noodle sometimes.
Yeah, that's understood. I know Mr. Evans presented, what, last February? He was basically communicating what he was told from FEMA that January of seventeen was supposed to be the map. And that's understood. He's passing along information that he received and he was told that that was the latest information and it turned out, wasn't correct, but it wasn't his, you know, wasn't his information. He was passing that along from FEMA, that's understood. That you're passing, you know, that the town is getting information from North Carolina Emergency Committee or FEMA, and that's-
We're going, we're getting it from whoever we can get it to. As an example of what we're dealing with, this is from FEMA's website today. The last time it was updated was nine fifteen twenty sixteen, and it's got the preliminary map date on it in January the twentieth. And the map, I mean, it doesn't have any of the appeal information in there at all. So, I mean, that's, that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah, okay.
Just as a clarification on the wording for the resolution, to make sure that I've got this right, we want to reword that first sentence by striking, by inserting August of twenty fourteen after the word "town" and then "strike" and "other affected communities in the state" in June twenty sixteen.
Correct.
And then carry on, okay, with-
Correct.
Well, if I heard the edit correctly, we're still stating that FEMA and NCEM issued those new preliminary flood maps for the town on that date. Is that going to be, is that going to be accurate?
And that's accurate.
Okay. So, we need a motion to-
I would think so.
So, move that we approve the Resolution seventeen oh one as amended.
A second.
Any more discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no. Shenanigans, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're done, number eight. Number nine, the Sellers family. Did you bring us some samples? That's not a good start.
Well, before I begin, I just want to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners for actually letting us speak. And then, secondly, I'd just like to clarify, those that spoke before, I appreciate your comment and your respect that you've shown to our business and our family. I completely understand the concerns, and that's what we're here for, is to kind of enlighten a little bit about how we do protect our business. And I know that we do not like to compare our beaches. I understand that too, being I was raised on Ocean Isle Beach in a family business for thirty-nine years, then worked at Sunset Beach for fourteen years, and then at Holden Beach. This will be my eighth season at Holden Beach. So, I do understand the concerns that people have for change of our Brunswick County beaches. I completely understand that because I continue spending most of my life in Brunswick County. I never thought there would be anything but our little old bridges. And now we have high-rise bridges. So, change is, is hard to accept, but on the same point, I just want to kind of flip it just a little bit to the fact that we all love our beaches, and we all love our little family-owned beaches. And that's our desire with our business, and those of you that, I see a lot of places that I do see in my shop and some of the people that spoke, I mean, I appreciate their business, and some of them I see a lot in my shop. We are underneath the bridge of one eleven, Turn Boulevard. We came to Holden Beach in two thousand and ten, where Sunset Slush started at Ocean Isle Beach and has been there for fifteen years. It's on Oak Island, and it's been there for thirteen years. We try to build a very family-oriented business. And if you frequent our building, then you know that that's what we stand for. We stand for customer service. We stand for pride in our beaches and what we do. We try to support the communities, and we try to get out there and become a part. I guess what I'm trying to, I don't want you to think that we're here to change, but I have to speak for my customers. And every year, they ask us all day long, June, July, and August, why are two on beach strand? Because they are familiar with it being on the other islands. So, I tell them I will continue to try, and that's what we're here for, is to let you know that as much respect as we have for the beaches, we do have to realize that our clientele has changed on our islands. And they will continue to change because we have people from everywhere. And June, July, and August, we have to cater to those people. And so, that's what we're here to do, yes. In seven years, our business has grown, and we're very thankful for it. We've been very welcomed, and we have a lot of loyal customers. Some of those people come in here on Saturday, and they wait at my shop to check in to their cottage. I see them every single night while they're here. So, per se, it's not so much of me trying to drive for the business, it's to satisfy my customers. So, I'm going to stop for a minute and introduce you. This is my son Drew, and this is my son Devon. We are a family business, and Devon is the one that got us in Sunset Slush all those years ago because he pushed the cart on Ocean Isle Beach while he was in high school. And Devon, I mean Drew, has worked at Holden Beach since he was in high school. He'd worked for Mr. Hobbs at the water slide and the go-kart track for years. So, we're very, we've been at Holden Beach a long time. Devon manages our beach services on Ocean Isle Beach, he and Drew both do. So, I'm going to kind of let him step in and tell you how we're operating and kind of maybe help you understand our business a little bit.
Hello, everyone. Oh, first, thank you for letting us speak here. Like my mom said, this is a business that's personalized. We love this business, we love the beaches that we are born and raised at. A lot of people want to, as we grew up, would say they didn't want to get away from Brunswick County. We're stuck here, and we're staying here until we pass away, or at least my grandkids. So, what I'm here to do today is just kind of enlighten you on what a daily business operation of a beach cart is. That way, you can just understand the picture of it. There are a lot of different styles of way people do it, and if you know us, we're going to do it as professional as we can. So, first, let me just start off with, you can see I'm dressed a little bit differently than they are. This is what our beach cart pushers are required to wear. We don't allow them to go out there without shirts on, we don't allow them to have bathing suits on, we don't allow them to enter the water while they're out there. They have to wear some type of shorts with pockets, has to look professional, and it always has to have one of our shirts on with the sleeves on. We just believe that if we're going to do something, we're going to honor the beach that we're at and respect it as much as possible. So, what we have is, we have beach carts. They are two foot wide by two foot deep. We carry four to six flavors on each cart, and we switch them between carts, and each day they take out different flavors as well. That way, our customers can get as much of a variety as they can, so someone always gets something they like. With that, we also do not allow our beach carts to sit still unless they are serving someone. Even in those, I know this because I push these carts myself. We are not, when we, when someone comes up to buy something, we try our best to push to a spot where there's not people, so we don't block their view. We understand people come to the beach to relax and to enjoy it. Our carts may patch you once on a beach day. We're only out there for a possible three to four hours, you can only push for so much, especially with the tide. If you're lucky, some do get it twice, and that's just because maybe two carts are crisscrossing. The only time our guys are allowed to stop is if they take a drink of water. Again, we try to tell them to go to a dead spot where there's not houses or where there's not someone sitting down. Trying to think, is there anything else I should talk about that some more? The only thing else I'm actually going to pass off to my brother is because we do care for the beach, this isn't just something, like I said, we grew up going to the beach, my wife's on the beach every single day. We like to keep the beach clean as much as possible ourselves, and he's going to go in to explain how we would do that. So, here's my brother Drew.
Once again, thank you for the opportunity to be here. A lot of people's concern at first is trash, and we know at all beaches in here there's a trash problem because people leave it out there, and some of them aren't considered. So, we believe that we help the problem instead of enhance the problem. The first thing that we do, we have these souvenir koozie cups that we put our ice in. First, it gives a deal to the customers, they save a little bit of money. But, most importantly, on the strand, it gets rid of the opportunity to have disposable cups. So, people can take these home, wash them, bring them back out there. That way, we don't have to put them in our paper cups. Yeah, we also have regular cups too, but we promote these with everyone who comes. He was talking about our employees who go up and down. This is why I say we really try to help, is each cart has a trash bucket where we will let people put trash in, but also each employee has to observe around them. Any kind of trash does not matter if it's Sunset Slush or not, they pick it up. If the carts come by for the second time and we see Sunset Slush trash that people haven't even left the beach yet, we'll go ahead and ask them if we can take it. So, we try to eliminate the trash as much as possible. We've been running the Ocean Isle Beach location for two years, and when we came in, we implemented, on Saturdays, we have employees walk the entire beach and pick up trash. Our guys will come back with two full trash bags each. And we do it every Saturday because it's the day that everyone leaves and everyone comes in, so we try to clean it up for everyone coming in. And then also, Ocean Isle Beach, we sponsor a trash bag at the end of the summer. So, we serve to everyone who comes for free. We go out and pick up trash, and I don't know if there's something like that here, but if there wasn't, we'd be willing to sponsor it and run it if we could. And before we finish and see if there's any questions, I would like to go back to what mom was saying a little bit a while ago, is, you know, without, a lot of the people who support us and want us out there are tourists or people who own second homes here, and they can't be here because they live other places. So, just remember them, without them, the beach wouldn't be what it is, it wouldn't run. Businesses would go out of business, Holden Beach wouldn't be what Holden Beach is. And from the Outer Banks to Myrtle Beach, there are only four beaches that don't have paddling, Figurite Island, Ryston Beach, Holden Beach, and Sunset Beach. And one of those, Holden Beach, does not fit in with the rest for very good reasons. Thank you. Anything else?
I also just wanted to say right quickly, because I know we don't want to take up a lot of your time, but we did, it weighs heavy on my heart, I'm on both ends of this. Of course, I have to satisfy my customers, and I know what we stand for at the business. So, a few years ago, I decided to satisfy myself. I put a little box out in front of our shop, a little mailbox, and I put a little card in a little slot next to it that asks, just basic questions, what's your favorite flavor? How many times do you come when you're here? If, would you like for us to be able to serve off the beach strand? I just did a little survey because I was by myself, little postcards. Well, that box definitely was filling up every day, and out of, I quit because there's a lot to do, but out of about two hundred and sixty-something surveys, six said no. Of course, that's our tourist clientele that was here June, July, and August. Those were the ones that were responding to my survey. So, just to kind of put it in your head, June, July, August, when we are, our job as merchants on this island and our job as commissioners of what to bring to this island for our tourist industry, I'm speaking for them to let you know, they want it, they're not against it. But I completely respect the fact that those that live here on the island, your concerns. And I hope, after listening to my sons tonight, that we are not here to just come for a season and leave. We've been here, this will be our eighth season, we do care about our island. We would strive tremendously to make it better. And trash, please go above and beyond on that. I know that's the number one concern for people, but that's a concern. We have a lot of disrespectful people that visit our islands. And so, I hope that you understand through our presentation tonight is that we're not here to change and take the status of the family beach- and take the status of the family beach away from Holden Beach. We're hoping to have an opportunity to enhance it, to add a little character to our beaches and to give our customers that are here June, July, and August, uh, the opportunity to enjoy it a little more. So with that being said, we're done.
Does any question validate?
Yeah, I have a question. Does the business model of your establishment require that you sell your product on the beach?
No. There are fifty-two different independent operators in Sunset Slush, um, stretching now all the way to Florida and New Orleans.
Okay, is your, and you can elect not to answer this if you wish, but I'm compelled to ask, uh, is your current business in jeopardy if you do not get approval to sell on the beach?
Let me see. No, we're not in jeopardy because honestly, if you taste it, you're coming back. Should have brought that ice tonight. But, um, that's the thing is, those of you that are out in our community, you know that Sunset Slush is in our local schools, it's on our local ball fields. Um, so no, we're very well known in the county. And on that same note, um, I mentioned earlier, my parents had the first world Ocean Isle Beach post office and all that. So I grew up there every summer. I never dreamed that Ocean Isle Beach would ever let any kind of pedaling on that beach. Of course, I never dreamed that there would be a high rise either. That's changed. But my point of that is, is that when we sto- we started here at Holden Beach and then we started leasing the Ocean Isle, um, pier store and the beach strand from the original owners of Sunset Slush two years ago. And so that kind of brought us to the point of where we understood it a little more about the beach services because we've become very active in it. And, uh, we also run the main store on one seventy-nine between Ocean Isle and Sunset. And, um, what it does as far as answering your question, I had no clue. I knew people at Holden Beach loved it, people at Ocean Isle loved it. But I filled in so many phone calls last year from people calling our number wanting to know when our guys were coming that they have waited and waited and waited. Um, it's such a demand over there that people call local relatives and most of you have relatives here. They come and say, the cottage I'm looking at, do the beach carts that buy there? So no, it would not keep us from it by no means because we, I think in the last seven years, we built a pretty good business here. But it would just not only enhance our business, plus we do have an issue. It would help us as far as advertisement because people go to the west end of Holden Beach and some of them never even come our way.
Simply answered, no, we are not going to go out of business if we don't get on the beach. Um, like I said, we're stuck here and we're going to stay here, um, no matter what. We will constantly continue to come back and ask, um, because we get asked all the time. That's my prediction.
And I, I think you deserve to be, to present your case because you've been a business, quality business here for seven years. So I don't understand why you'd ever, any business would not be invited and encouraged to present, uh, present their case to expand their, uh, their business. I also have two other comments that, um, you, 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 uh, talk about how it is regulated. That, and I think the key is well regulated. So we have control. So you know, it's a slippery slope, uh, we don't want to be commercialized. Well, that's what regulations are all about, to control growth, control, um, you know, the business.
Oh, I'm going to speak on that actually, if you don't mind. Uh, that was brought up earlier and, um, I forgot to mention it because opened up indoor blocks. We are all for being strict on our regulations, even if that causes us a hard time to get these regulations through. But there are ways, there are many towns, as my brother mentioned, there's only four beaches that don't do this, to, to find out the best way. And that's, we are all supportive for that. We are not saying, hey, only do it this way so we can get it. We want you guys to explore all the options possible, come up what you feel is best and we're willing to go with it. Like that's definitely our.
And I have to keep saying Ocean Isle because I'm still, we serve there. So forgive me for that, but we do serve there. Um, they regulate, they only allow a certain amount of permits out there. Um, and each company, I think it's, I think they do fifteen permits. Each company gives three permits. You, you can give up to three. Well, what happened with us because we've become so well-known and so popular there. Uh, there was us, uh, Carolina Quench, which is a lemonade. Um, there was a hot dog vendor which they're off. I think it's just two of us now that have gotten the permits this year. But what they let us do because they had people calling town halls saying, you know, they need more carts or whatever, because we are so well-known there, that they let us go back and get more permits of the ones that were left. Uh, because if they were going to allow fifteen permits and only six were taken, they let us go back and get three more. And, um, just because the customers were wanting it. Uh, so, I mean, I do have to say, I appreciate what Ocean Isle has done to support us in that. But they strictly regulate everything. Um, I put in your packets a letter from the mayor of Ocean Isle and, um, of course, I'm sure you talked to her. They were concerned at the beginning too, but I could fine tune it to where they are very strict on who's there. And they enforce, you know, the conduct and the behavior there too.
Is, is the complete package available to the public in the back of the room? Yeah, okay.
I'm looking for the email.
Yeah, it's in, it's on the.
It's on the internet, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, I would encourage everybody to look at it. It's very well presented.
I was going to say also Oak Island, they, we took, we spoke to the owners over there the other day. And they've been doing, this will be their thirteenth season pushing on the beach. And they are, um, they have unlimited amount. Anyone can go get a permit and go out there, yet there's only two different companies out there.
We were kind of on the way, we went and went to the beach last week and they have no regulations on that. But only two vendors are out there.
The other question, in, in the package, and, and if you can confirm this, you're, you offered to do a one-year pilot?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, that's what actually we did on Ocean Isle fifteen years ago. Um, the original, I was presented to the board and said, just give us a trial season. Give us one summer. If it doesn't work and you're never comfortable with it, fine. But at least we could see if it's something that works. And of course, it did work fifteen years later, we're still there. But we are willing to do whatever you ask of us, um, just to have an opportunity.
Thank you. I, my opinion is, I'd like to understand the regulations. Because I, I, I'd like to understand, I'd like to get all the information before I make, before a decision is made. And that's how, how I, how I operate. So unless we understand the, uh, how other beach towns control their beach strand vendors and i- i- you know, if and what the, what we legally can do to restrict it, um, uh, that, I'd like to, that, 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 that's, I think, is the, is the first thing we did do, could should do before we, any decision is made.
And is that a question for the lawyer to take care of, to be direct to specifically? I mean, like I have a lot of legal questions that you may be able to answer right now.
I'm sure. Um, and I hate to interrupt, but you just sent out a message something. Uh, with, it's in our proposal, but we all have to carry certain insurance. And we are very well covered in that. And so we're not a liability to contain because we're covered in our own concessions.
My concern is, is if you say they're only going to permit three food carts. I'm just making up. And we prevent businesses that aren't on the island from getting those permits? Like they're a brick and mortar, you know, building on our island. Is that really equitable? I mean, can we get in trouble for that? Is that?
There are lots of, um, different approaches to this in terms of beach services. You use that term. Um, some municipalities, um, have regulations that require a permanent application of three basic requirements. It's first come, first served or lottery. Um, you know, some beach municipalities require that if a business that wants to transact a business on the beach also has to have a brick and mortar building within the town limits. So the, there are lots of different ways of going about that. Where the town of Holden Beach is right now is you have an outright prohibition against peddlers on the beach. So, um, absent some direction from the board for, um, staff and myself to work together to present you with some options. Um, and it will take some time to make certain that we have full understanding of what we want and what, um, how it works for the existing ordinances of the county. The board could take action tonight to approve this company, um, providing services on the beach.
Yeah, no, that's understood. But, but, so it is legal? It's because really the big, the number one attraction to me was that they do have a presence. This company does, do, does have a presence on the beach.
You can allow it or you can prohibit it.
But it could be a prerequisite?
What could be, I'm sorry.
Having a brick and mortar business?
You can structure it in a number of different ways, yes.
Could we be at issue if they're selling ice in front of an ice cream shop and it takes business away from the ice cream shop that happens to be on the beach selling ice cream?
There are a number of factors that the town would want to consider in the awarding contracts. Dislocation of services within the existing buildings that are adjacent to the beach strand. How many permits are issued to, same type of business on the beach strand. Um, and whether or not you require there to be a brick and mortar building for them to conduct business on the beach strand. There are a number of factors that can require, um, much of that.
So I think the next step is, as you mentioned to me, would be you work with the staff in providing some of those options to go. So, uh, a informed decision can be made.
Because I appreciate those people that spoke. It makes me nervous. Just not having, um, enough guidelines to give you, I mean, I don't really know how to direct you quite yet. Um, so good luck. But I, I mean, I just feel like we need to regulate it such that it's so much that we would just be giving one company a permit and that's not legal.
Not if you're building it, if you're, if they're the only people that you're going to give it, you have to offer it.
Right.
Yeah, there's a fine line. I, I, I agree. I appreciate the, 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 the discussion beforehand too. But as mentioned, there's hundreds and hundreds of people that, I've been to Ocean Isle, I, I confess. And I've had your product. Um, and I think it's an enhancement to our family beach. Um, and that, that's my opinion, other people. And there are a lot of, there, there are tourists that come here that I'm sure would, would like that. And we're in the tourist business.
I have a point of order question for the mayor. The agenda said a guest speaker. It seems to me that we're getting past the guest speaker into the debate about whether we should do it or not. And I'm wondering if that is appropriate.
No, sir, in my opinion, it's not. Those pleasant and all, the points well taken. And unless the commissioners tell me I'm wrong and the attorney agrees, I'm going to say yes. Point of order stands. They've made their presentation. There's no, there's nothing in the agenda that talks about, uh, unless I'm not seeing it, the debate or anything about it. It's just a presentation and that is all that's allowed. So you are correct, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda, number ten, discussion and possible action on ordinance number seventeen oh one. Town clerk, Ms. Fennell.
Ordinance seventeen oh one is that they would adopt the supplement number fifteen to our code of ordinances. And all that is, is, um, the supplement codifies all of the ordinances that you passed since our last supplement.
Need a motion to approve that?
We need a motion before we can discuss it.
I move that we approve ordinance seventeen oh one, the, uh, enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances.
Second.
Second.
All right, now discuss it.
This is a housekeeping exercise if there ever was one.
Any ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She now has met a clerk. Number eleven, discussion and possible approval of solid waste contract. Mr. Hewitt.
We've got Kendra McDonald, our administrative assistant, is going to speak to the solid waste contract tonight. I know my name's on the agenda, but Kendra's the one that really knows the deep background details and is probably the smartest one here on it tonight.
Um, we've got the memo in front of you. I don't know, you know, how we never look at it, but pretty much, you know, the only change we have is a two percent increase on some of our fees and possibly doing away with yard waste collection. You know, unless you don't want to do away with yard waste collection, I mean, you know, we recommend looking at, um, looking at the separate vendors and bidding for it. It's a cost will be substantial if you don't. You know, do away with the recycling center. Voluntary recycling is pretty much the same as it has been, nothing's changed in there.
How much does it cost us a year to do the trash, the yard waste pickup?
Right now, it's what, ninety-eight cent, ninety-eight cent per property. But you're only looking at two hundred, three hundred participation, you know, property participation. So you're all paying for something that not everybody's utilizing, so.
It's about a fourteen thousand dollar hit on the budget on the solid waste.
So it costs us fourteen thousand dollars a year to pick up here?
About that much, yes.
I for one, I mean, use that. I trim my own shrubs, I trim my palm trees, I, I trim my oleanders. I don't have a truck to put the waste in. I put it out there, they come pick it up. And everybody on my street does the same thing. Tony Marwich does that, Jack Smith does that, Larry Ivey does that. Fitzgeralds do that. It's something, I live on a street that has a lot of permanent residents and we all use that service. So I think that it's, it's something that a lot of the people do use. For the least, the least people that live here on a permanent basis.
How many did you say Kendra would take advantage of this?
I think last time we talked to the waste industries, it was between two and three hundred people. But you've got six months of the year, twice a month pickup. You know, out of those three hundred people, you might have one person use it, you know, a month. Out of those three hundred, you know, so. But like I said, you're talking about two thousand, two hundred and forty something properties and everybody's paying for that and not everybody's using it.
So the recommendation is to use possibly someone else to do that work? And could there be a different model? Um, you know, not, not every property pay for it, just give an estimate. You know, we've got history that there's three hundred properties use it. Um, why are we not using that history to formulate a contract with someone?
I think with speaking with waste industries, it wasn't cost efficient for them. They don't need to be responsible for our waste anymore. Um, I think that's just the biggest issue.
So that's why they're pricing it where they, they basically don't want to do the business? Okay.
Mr. Clemmons, one of their comments.
Land members say the waste industry didn't want to be a middleman in it. I think the price is asking a level of, if you're a waste industry to take it, so to do a way to do it, if we must, uh, definitely. Just be as that.
Because not only are they, you know, proposing higher costs, but also they want to do it every month, not just six months out of the year, you know, this time of year.
Well, seeing we do have a precedent in that we individually pay for recycling bins. If we want to recycle, then that could be an option for yard waste.
Do you have an alternative of another organization that might provide the service?
I don't. I think that's something that we're gonna need to bid separately for. You know, it's gonna happen. Well.
It'd be good to know how much that would cost and if we could in fact do it on an individual house.
And that's, and that's what we haven't done. We haven't put together a statement of work and put a solicitation out. And we're just proposing that it be deleted from the Waste Industry contract and delve in to see if there's an, if there's still a desire to do that, we would recost it separately and bring it back to the board. It's a smaller scope of work and what's really happened is Waste Industries is beyond that now.
What was a, let me ask David this earlier. Was, was it asked of Waste Industries to provide, what would the cost be to provide island-wide recycling?
We've, not, not for this exercise. Uh, well, yes, it was for this exercise. We'd done it previously and then we did, we also included it when we were going through here. And the closest we could get was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar delta with our current level of service and what, what it would take Waste Industries to provide us with a, basically a curbside recycling function.
And how much would that be? It would be, um, it would depend how you guys would want to do the service. It would actually be if we, if we changed it to year-round, um, where they collect it once a week instead of bi-weekly, it would be eighty-four dollars annually per person. And then if you change it to once a week for the summer and then every other week in the off-season, it's sixty-six dollars per person.
Are you saying per, per house? Per property?
Correct.
Okay.
Per, per bin. It would be per bin.
Per bin.
Per bin, right.
And then we're gonna have to figure out how many bins rental houses are gonna need. Because if you go buy a rental house, their cans are full of soda cans, beer cans, and water bottles.
And they pick up.
And if they use, and if they use the blue can to put their trash in, the trash company won't pick it up, recycle people won't pick it up, and the trash company won't pick it up, which means Chris and them have to end up going out empty. Such is something to think about.
The, the cost can be figured out. It's more than what you're paying now, quite a bit more. What we cannot come to grips with is the service level requirement for the seasonal influx of rental properties. That, that is the hurdle that we cannot break or the, the code that we, we cannot crack on the twice-weekly pickup. That, that's, that's our stymie. I mean, the, the cost, we, you can throw money at it and, and put that type of service in and it will be more. Um, but we cannot get past the logistics of the weekly turnover for the rentals. That's where we're stymied.
Have we looked in the past at a recycled requirement for rental houses and done a weekly pickup of that?
That's, that's exactly what, what we're talking about there. Now, what, what I would like to do is September, we will have a year's worth of data when our recycling bin is, will have been closed. And we'll have a handle on a, a number of years of what the subscription service for recycling is. Cause right now, it's ten percent of the homes, you know, subscribe to the service. Um, and with a, a year's worth of data, uh, plus the, under our belt, with the recycling center down, um, what I would like to do is basically assemble, um, I hate to use the term focus group, but a, um, a stakeholder group that includes some of the property managers. Cause the property manager's gonna tell me that it does not work for, for those weekly renters. And we're going to come back to that. But use that, um, that group as a way to attempt to, um, shrink wrap a solution here, better than what we've come up with so far, which is basically the same thing that we've had before, plus some cost increases and less, less a few of the services.
So after that data is available, is this contract, can you, can we update this contract if needed?
Uh, yes.
And the term of this contract is how long?
Mm-hmm.
It could be whatever it is.
Three years?
Three years. And Greg Brinkley, he's the manager, he has told us all that if you decided to change recycling, he's willing to work with us at any time to do that.
Okay.
I'm ready to vote. I can just bring up two things in the, I spoke with Dave about this earlier. Um, there are two, three things in the contract that I believe need to be modified. Uh, one is in section two, the word exclusive, which people do. Um, also in paragraph two, it should say materials in town of Holden Beach, Brunswick County, not just all of Brunswick County. And the third thing is that there should be a prerequisite.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming we, you're voting on the changes the attorney recommended?
Yes.
Anybody understand that? All right.
And we're voting not to have yard waste pickup also. Is that correct?
This, this contract doesn't have yard, yard waste in it.
It doesn't mean that we can't get, look for somebody else to do it, right?
Right.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Four to one, Madam Clerk. We're at number twelve.
Yep.
Ms. Ferguson?
Good evening, everyone. Um, this item on the agenda is regarding the Brunswick County Greenway Bike Routes and Paddle Trail Plan. In April of two thousand and fifteen, we were invited by the Brunswick County Planning Department and other municipalities in the county to participate in a countywide plan that would show how bike routes, Greenways, and Blue Ways interconnected within the county. Um, people chose to participate at different levels. Some towns could use the plan immediately. In grant situations, they were in with developments and Greenways and getting credit for that. Um, we were not in a situation where we could currently use that for the grant that we were doing, but we did decide for promotional purposes that we would participate at the minimal level, which was five hundred dollars to be included on promotional materials. Um, so this is just to basically finalize that. The money's already been paid. It's just to show support that the maps are complete now and their final drafts are out. They had an open house that people could attend to give feedback. And it goes before their Board of Commissioners in March. And they're just looking for a resolution of support from all the communities that agreed to participate.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move we approve the resolution.
I second.
In discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Can I keep going?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Um, the Lockwood Bally Navigation Draging. Um, if you guys will remember when we were in this time of year last year and doing our budget preparation meeting, this came up, we did not have enough information at the time on items like volume, cost, what we thought would be involved. But we did bring it to the board's attention that if it did come up and there was more information that can make a decision, um, that we could go with, that we would bring it back to your attention. Um, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will be performing navigation maintenance of the Lockwood Bally inlet channel fifty feet of the widener at the AIWW inlet crossing in the March timeframe that possibly has been moved up timewise. Uh, we are gonna be meeting with them tomorrow to discuss the location of the pipeline on the beach. Um, and just, they just finished up a different section earlier, so they may be here sooner than March. They're gonna be using the least cost, cost method of disposal to place the sand on the east end of Holden Beach between approximately Amazing Grace and two forty O V E. Um, as we did piggyback in two thousand and fourteen, they've approached us about piggybacking. What makes it nice to do it this way is that we are able to use the four-state minimum random of agreement, which means we don't have to dip into our permits. Um, even though this bend-widener section where we could piggyback is not covered under federal dollars that they would pay, the North Carolina Division of Order of Resources does, does pay two-thirds of the estimated cost of four hundred and fifty-six thousand, um, with the local map being a hundred and fifty-two thousand and Brunswick County already agreeing to pay half of that, which was seventy-six. So that would leave the town with paying seventy-six. Um, we do believe that the additional sixty thousand cubic yards that is decreased cost per yard is worth capitalizing on at this time. The original east end of Holden Beach could certainly benefit from the sand placement, as will the entire strand eventually due to littoral drift. And especially in light of calls from the east end property owners since the central region's gone out about what could be done in their area. So staff is recommending to approve the piggyback project and the appropriate budget amendment that's attached.
I have a question. Has this, this sounds familiar. Um, have we done this before?
Two thousand and fourteen.
Fourteen was the last time? I'm sorry if you said that. Okay, thanks.
And it's, and it's probably been done many times before that.
Yeah.
Uh, except the town hasn't, hasn't paid for it. All of, it's always been funded by the feds before.
Okay. But the last time was twenty fourteen?
Mm-hmm.
And same time, March, March?
I believe it was in February, September.
Same, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Christie, in, in your letter, you, it states the county commissioners favor contributing seventy-six thousand.
And since this time, they actually did, they've already voted on their section of it. They just got confirmation of that.
Okay, good. That's all I had. Sound like a great deal.
Yep.
I move that we approve ordinance seventeen oh two.
Second.
Motion, second. In discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I believe that's unanimous. I believe we're at number fifteen now. Correct. Shark fishing. Mr. Fletcher?
After I heard the presentation from Oak Island describing how the people were shark fishing from the beach and they had two shark attacks on the beach in twenty fifteen, is it twenty fifteen? Twenty fifteen? It occurred to me that it might be wise for Holden Beach to step out front and lead the way and not wait for something to happen. And in fact, set of, uh, statute that says we don't allow shark fishing on the beach, anywhere on our beach, on the intercoastal waterway from the island or from the pier. That's my proposal.
I would ask that you make sure that we have jurisdiction over that, sir.
Yeah. So there, there are two components to the regulation of shark fishing. Um, the Division of Marine Fisheries is the state component and they really basically, um, follow the federal regulations regarding sharks. So, um, I did place a call to the Division of, uh, Marine Fisheries, I think I'm getting that wrong or I'm a little lost in words, um, today. And their position is that, um, yes, they regulate it. Does the town have the right to adopt the ordinance? Um, the town can only adopt the ordinance that has enabling legislation. Um, there is no enabling legislation other than the general police power that could be construed to allow the town to regulate fishing, uh, or fishing for sharks. It really is federal and state territory. Um, it would also be difficult to enforce. How do you know what somebody's fishing for up and down the beach strand and they've got, you know, their pole in the water? I think that's what the other municipalities that I have researched have to look at. Um, there is some distinction between fishing and chumming.
That's the...
There is some distinction between that. Um, I did not get a directly, surprise, surprise, from the Division, um, in regards to that. Um, but if the town is interested in something like that, we can try to get something in writing indicating that, that is a possible ordinance the town can adopt. Otherwise, I think that it could be struck down.
Well, when you see shark fishing, you know it's shark fishing. It's the size of the reel, size of the rod. And if they're going out in a kayak to put a dead chicken on a big hook that big, they're shark fishing.
I'm not determined. Um, so I don't know shark fishing when I see it, but, um, I do know that if, from an enforcement standpoint, the other needs to have a chance of it. So maybe it is a limited concern. I don't know. Um, any other questions about that?
I think my only interest would be the, the chumming because, I mean, from my limited viewpoint, that's what attracts them. So if there's something we could do on that end, if we have appropriate jurisdiction. That's just my opinion, not the board's.
Chief?
Sure, I may. Um, I think we're talking about two years ago when, uh, Oak Island had the two shark attacks within a fairly short period of time. Uh, if I remember correctly, we went on the beach every day. Um, that was realistically an unusual year here, as far as sharks were concerned. Uh, the water warmed up really quickly. The bait fish came in the shore really early. And the sharks migrated south more during that particular time of year. Somebody stop me if I say something wrong. They, they're migrating at that time. And it was, it was just, uh, all the stars aligned and a couple people had a bad day. Um, the sharks were coming in for the bait fish, not because somebody was fishing for sharks. Um, sharks were just doing what they do in their house. And that is their house. That's where they live. And that's how they feed. And the attacks were either early in the morning or late in the afternoon when sharks did.
Meeting time.
Um, so I, I don't know that a regulation per se is gonna have any impact as far, as far as whether or not you're gonna have a shark attack or not. Uh, and I respectfully say that being here fifteen years, I think we probably had four in fifteen years. And you got a better chance of walking down the beach in a thunderstorm, getting struck by lightning than getting bit by a shark. That's just, that's just my opinion. I think that was just, uh, an abnormal year, an unusual year. And fortunately, we didn't have any that year. It was, it was Oak Island and it was Ocean Isle. But for whatever reason, they passed us by. And I was thankful for that.
And my other question, my question would be is if someone happens to catch a shark who's not fishing for a shark, what do you do? I mean, I've been out there before fishing, caught a small bait fish, been reeling them in. The shark has taken it and I ended up pulling the shark, having to get the shark off my line, which I wasn't real happy about. I mean, but what do you do?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, that's a pretty, that's a pretty tough one. I would, I would, I don't know if it'd be worth the time I guess or what else.
I would definitely be opposed to chumming. Anytime you throw lots of blood and dead fish out there into the water, you're just asking to get something to come in that's, you don't want to come in.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not a proponent of that. I'm just saying that...
Could you ask some questions about that, Noel? And, and how far away from the shore can boats chum as well? Because I've seen small little skiffs right at the shoreline throwing buckets of blood in with a kid, you know, a couple yards away swimming.
I will get some information.
Thank you.
Well, we got an ordinance that prevents them from coming in with, like, a hundred yards, uh, Kevin's got a motor on.
That's kind of what I... That's kind of one of those on the sea and the island.
A kayak, on the other hand, a kayak, on the other hand, that kind of sort of defeats that, so it's a tough one.
Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a motion? Hearing no motion, then we're able to move on?
Yep.
Mr. Hewitt, Town Manager's report.
Yes, sir, I'll be brief tonight. The Central Reach project, we cleared the pier over the weekend, and it looks like we're about sixty-five percent of the way done. That doesn't, that's not a volume metric, that's a down-the-beach kind of measurement, a thumb Kentucky windage measurement. FEMA, Matthew damages. That project worksheet that we've submitted to capitalize on the dredge's presence here and trying to take advantage of not having to mobilize. That project worksheet cleared the Office of Legislative Affairs late last week, and I understand is now in the Office of Management and Budget. It was President's Day weekend, and I know everybody was off, Congress is home for ten days now, and about the only thing I can say is the window of opportunity is closing fast. So we're, we're still, we're still in the game, but somebody else is pitching, is where we're at. Bridgeview Park, we've broken ground on the picnic shelter. Estimated completion date on that facility is one April, so it should go up pretty quick once we get some pilots here. These, Michael Norton asked me to pass on to y'all the super vulnerability assessment that was approved last month. He has met with the staff, we've assembled a whole bunch of documents, engineering information for them so they can characterize the situation. He's benchmarked Sunset Beach's operation, Oak Island's operation. He's taken some of our staff with them to both of those other locations to see what, what they're doing, and looking at an end of March deliverable for you, for the report coming back to you. So I just wanted to pass that on to, to y'all from him. Decals, normally they would have gone out in February, and we had intended to send them out in early March, limiting them to two decals, but I can't get that in front of y'all until the March meeting to amend the fee schedule. So I'm loathe to ask you to let me send them just two decals and buy four on a whim. It looks like it's gonna be the April timeframe before we can get decals out.
Did we look at the option of getting it, an app on the phones that kept people's ID to come on the, on the island?
No.
We talked about it after the storm.
If, if it was talked about, I must have missed that one, because it didn't register with me, even through the after-action report. I don't, I don't recall that. We haven't looked at it.
So, so it's a change from four to two, David? You're, you're saying the decals per household?
That's, that's what we'd like, and just as sure as I'm doing something that I don't like to do, so I'm putting something in front of the board, and I don't have the hump, the staff work done to go along with that. I'm just...
Is there a reason you reduce it from four to two?
We think that people don't take the decal seriously, and by reducing the supply, believe that it will get their attention.
Are we gonna...
Now, now it's too free, you can buy the other two to get four. And the rationale for constricting the supply is that, per our senior physical operations specialist, is after hurricane, when we're controlling access to the beach, you need a pickup truck and a seat van to get on the beach. There's no need for people to have one for their Harley-Davidson and one for their golf court, that golf cart, that kind of thing.
Good.
Well, would we be in order to just, uh, seek consensus to give the town manager direction if he so needs it?
That would work for me. I know what to do, or what I'd like to do. That's...
Does that need to be an agenda item for the public to talk about?
To, um...
Just on reducing the number of passes?
It's on the fee schedule.
If it's the fee schedule, it has to be, but if it's just reduce the number of passes, then that's...
The, the charge in the fee schedule will remain the same, it's just we're gonna reduce the number of free passes, so...
Price goes up. Price goes up, number goes down.
Price stays the same.
That's not changing prices.
It's listed as four for free, for zero dollars in the fee schedule, so it is listed as that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We need to be safe and... So Madam Clark, whoever's in charge of the agendas...
March.
Will talk with you about that, and maybe they'll consider putting it on the agenda in March. Anything else, Mr. Hewitt?
Just if, have y'all had a chance to look at your calendar, so we can verify the time for the fifteenth March budget workshop?
Nine works for me.
Nine works for me.
Works for me.
It's good.
Maybe I missed that one, too.
I, I, we didn't get that one.
We didn't get, we didn't get that one. I'm good.
All right, thank you, sir. Sand project, I've heard nothing but positive comments from property owners, visitors, and all of those that are in awe of what's taking place out there. It's such a good project. Shell seekers are more than happy. I don't think I've ever seen as many people on Holden Beach, beach strand in February as we are having. And I don't remember seeing multiple people in multiple locations swimming in February like we had last weekend. Little kids, adults, didn't see any locals out there. I do have one concern, and I don't know if some changes have been made that I don't know about, but whenever there's a legal meeting for the mayor of a town in a closed session, am I still supposed to be the person representing the town? I mean, I've got the title, but I just wanna make sure that I'm supposed to be the one that represents the town.
You mean as a spokesperson?
Well, if, if a commissioner's gonna sit in my chair in a closed legal meeting, I would greatly appreciate a forewarning and have an opportunity to understand it so that I won't be embarrassed, and the town won't be embarrassed. And that's all I'm gonna say about it. So if you'll communicate with me, if you're gonna take my place and let me sit in the back of the room, I'd like to know about it ahead of time. And that's all I'm gonna say about it. I was hot, but I didn't say anything in the whole meeting. We need a spokesperson for the town of Holden Beach. And back whenever this administration took office, Congressman McIntyre came and offered his services, and we have never, we cast him aside, we have never had anyone speaking for us in Washington or in Raleigh that I'm aware of. We don't have anybody on the payroll, and I've never seen anybody from the town at those meetings. And here, I'm sitting here tonight, we're playing catch-up in regards to the flood insurance, the wind and hail, and so forth, and I just wanna say, pleading with the town, hire somebody in these meetings to speak for us, because we don't have anybody anymore. We have nobody. And we are an entity of the town of Holden Beach, and we're in the books as a town of Holden Beach, but getting things done, you have to have somebody carrying the ball for you. And we have no one. And I'm just gonna encourage the board, if you don't want McIntyre, find somebody that has the connections, the knowledge and know-how how to help this town. And with all due respect, letters are not gonna do you any good. Now, those obviously been around the government for a long time, they're wonderful, and they make you feel good in sending them, but it's not gonna open the doors for you, and it's not gonna give a priority for you. If you don't have a personal relationship with those in power, you're not gonna get anything. And we are spinning our wheels, and I'm here tonight to tell you that ain't nothing gonna speed up this flood map. Nothing. I was the first one to tell you last year that it was gonna be delivered on time, and I had several people, "Oh, you're wrong, it's coming, Jack." I told you, and I stood my ground, and I was right. I'm standing my ground tonight, you're not gonna get a map this year. The only whisper I've had, maybe December, no later than February. So I'm just sharing the summary of the knowledge that I just happen to have, and you can take it to the bank for whatever it's worth. And we need all of the interested parties that want to be participating and help. We need your help. Phone calls and letters are good. Individual phone calls, individual handwritten notes, that kind of communication is better. But blanket letters, they're gonna go on top of the desk, or file drawer, or thrown away. I mean, that's just the way it is up the ladder. And, and looking around the room, I see people have been in high places and held high offices, and you know, the way the bureaucracy is, that's just the way it works. And I am also told that, the question was raised tonight about just Holden Beach Island, no. And I think someone made the comment that it crosses the waterway. Our map crosses the waterway. So whenever we send a letter, the P O A sends a letter about Holden Beach, you're not talking about just Holden Beach. You're crossing over onto the mainland. And those are the kind of things that you have to be careful, because the first thing, somebody on the mainland says, "Oh, Holden Beach, that speaks for me." And then they, then the people in power get the mixed signals. So what do they do? Nothing. You've got to have people that know how it works, with knowledge, expertise, and so forth, speaking for you in the right places at the right time. And I've tried to keep my mouth shut about it, but I hate to hear all of us begging for flood insurance maps, and we're going nowhere. And we're not gonna go anywhere until we get our game plan together, implement the game plan, and make something happen. That's enough of my preaching. And I had some other things, but I'm gonna leave that off, I've already said too much. But I am impassioned about saying what I'm saying to you. Been doing this a long time officially and unofficially. And, you know, whenever I was Congressman McIntyre's spokesperson and manager for Brunswick County for eighteen years, I went to a lot, a lot of meetings. We got millions of dollars for Holden Beach with the help of Mr. Hewitt and some others. That money's gone, and you don't have anybody trying to get it for us. The money's dried up, yes, but how did we get Brunswick County and North Carolina's money? How many people in this room went to any of those meetings behind closed doors or in open session? How many of you went? How many did you go to?
Been to three.
Went to three, we're worthy. We're worthy.
Believe me.
Yeah. That's a general, that's an open public meeting, right?
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to you, sir, you got the floor.
Well, I guess in response to your comments, one, I was here when Congressman McIntyre made his presentation, and I was sort of surprised that he didn't make a motion to, to hire him. Because I knew right away he went to another island and was hired by another island. But it never seemed to come up as a subject.
Commissioners usually make the motion. My hands are tied.
And I have to ask, in your earlier comments, were you suggesting that this board has had a closed meeting, that you weren't in attendance?
No, sir.
Ah, okay.
I went to a meeting that was a closed meeting, and someone was there in my place. Not town meeting.
Are you talking about the investigation?
Yes, sir, I am.
I was invited by the district attorney to be there. How does your rep? I was personally invited by the district attorney.
You represent the town?
I did not represent the town.
Well, you just said you represent the town, to represent the town. He's not gonna tell you no, and somebody asks him, he's never gonna tell somebody no.
I didn't call him, he called me.
I'm not gonna debate it with you. Those of us that were witnesses were the ones in the room, or those that replaced a witness. I, I don't wanna debate with you, I just don't want it to happen again. If it's gonna happen again, just tell me. That's all I'm asking. Just tell me. I had no knowledge of it, but that's all I wanna say. It'll never come up again.
Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight.
It's good to see all the different representatives here tonight. It indicates interest, and that's a good thing. I'll strongly consider some of the things that we've heard tonight. Foremost in my mind is, is protecting Holden Beach as it exists, with fair consideration of anything we wanna do in addition to that. But I am, my, I'm wired to be convinced to do something different first before I act, and I'm still deliberating on that. One of the things that's come to my mind is, is, over this past year-plus of being on the board, is that we serve a two-year term, and the, it's been my understanding that previous boards some time ago had terms that, that overlapped each other, to whereas we wouldn't have a board, theoretically, we could have a board turnover every two years. And my, from my own personal perspective, I believe it casts undue hardship on the, the town staff, because Mr. Hewitt reports to the board, and I am seriously considering re, possibly reinstituting a staggered board, so that, number one, the board members, well, myself, I would have more experience, and I could better interact with the town and possibly make better decisions. So I'm just saying that publicly, that I have no aspiration of enacting anything that would extend my current term, because I, I would have a personal ethical problem with that. But I do believe we need to consider implementing staggered terms so that we can better support and provide possibly wiser decisions in directing the town.
Mr. Freyer?
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming. I appreciate the input from H B P O A and from the rest of the community regarding the FEMA flood, flood map. We, trust me, everybody understands that it's, it, it means a lot... We, um, trust me, everybody understands that it's, uh, it, it means a lot to a lot of people, and we're doing everything we can to, uh, to, uh, make that effective as soon as possible. Thank you.
Um, I'd just like to say thank you for the staff, for your hard work this past month. And the, um, Valentine dance, I understand, was a huge hit, and there were a lot of people who had a lot of fun there, so thank you for that.
How many people attended your dance?
Um, there were around twenty-five.
Very good, heard good things. Ken?
Uh, well, thank you everybody for coming tonight. Um, I also want to, uh, express the desire for the board to put an item on our agenda for next month to see if there's any public interest in having yard waste picked up by somebody else. And just 'cause I want it doesn't mean that everybody else wants it. So I'd like to see it on the agenda so we can see if there's any interest from the town. You, members of public. That's it, thank you.
Public comments on anything you wanna talk about? You're mighty quick to spring to your feet. You are quick to spring to your feet. Are you ready to go?
I'm sorry, how's everybody doing?
Good.
I just wanted to talk in favor of the Sunset Slush, Pediment on the Beach. I know you guys can regulate that, it needs to be regulated, but, you know, the, we're, we're a growing community, and as services become available, we try to incorporate those, and I think it'd be a great thing, have a business on the beach, picking up trash, providing a service to the, uh, the kids, basically, it's kids, you know, and it'd make more of a family environment to have Sunset Slush out there on the beach.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Young?
Just a quick comment, when you've mentioned McIntyre, who used to be our representative, and, um, we would all commend him for everything he did in regard to the beach. But we do have a representative now who has taken his place, and it's Mr. Rouser, I believe. And I believe that he came down here once. David, I think you and I met with him, or some of us met with him, in this room. I haven't seen him back here yet, and I don't mean to be political, I don't care what party it is. If he's supposed to be representing us, maybe it'd be nice if he got down here once in a while to see what we needed from him as our representative. Also, when we had that many, um, island group, um, that was also a chance to get together for common good and lobbying, and we don't have that anymore, which is a shame. And apparently, the new, the new group, I guess, has fallen apart.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Um, in regards to the congressman, I will be, I'm meeting with him later this week. And, um, the, uh, group that you're talking about, they do meet quarterly. And, uh, traditionally, we meet in the county commissioners' chambers. Did I say that right, Ms. Hewitt?
But do we, do people know that?
Well, it's a, it's an open meeting.
Do they, do we get notice of?
It, it just started back.
Yeah.
It just started.
And thank you for your time and effort put on that board. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Los Angeles Control, one thirty-two, talking. I'd like to say that I think Ashley has a good point on staggered terms for board members, and I think it should be considered.
Thank you. Anyone else? Talk about anything you wanna talk about, yes?
Larry, one oh eight, Lanesport. Uh, I've been holding four bags of rums, I've got a whole bundle, I mean, about five or six bundles of rums that I've been holding for the March thing, so it looks like it's not gonna get picked up, am I correct? Is that what we decided to do? Okay, so, I'm, I'm with Ken, I'd like to see the, the yard waste picked up.
Anyone else? Going once? Twice? All right. I need a reading from our clerk.
Executive session to discuss the personnel matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three, three one eight, eleven eight three.
I agree with Ken.
Is there a motion? Need a motion?
Yep.
Motion.